Uh, two families in our, in our, in our school family. Uh, Mr. Roger Cook and Ms. Emily Southern, uh, who both are in your presence now. And we pray that you will be with them and, and lead and, and comfort their families. Uh, so that they can get through this, this time of, of need for them. Uh, both were, uh, outstanding teachers and mentors to our students. And, uh, we wish the best for their family. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. You want to join us in a pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, equal, liberal, free, and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone, uh, to the meeting tonight. Uh, we do have a, um, we do have a new face with us tonight, new, uh, Ms. Pendleton. Yes. Hopefully, uh, before too long, we can get you an updated name tag, so we'll, uh, be able to recognize you there. But it's in the mail. I've heard that before, so, uh, but, uh, welcome. We're excited to have you and, uh, and, uh, and filling in for, uh, Ms. Liger. And, uh, taking over her, her role, and I know that's a huge shoes to feel, but, uh, we feel certain that you can do a great job with that, so, uh, we're glad to have you. So, uh, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Um, I need the approval of the agenda. And, uh, go ahead.
Uh, Chairman Roberts, I would like to add one item, item two to the action agenda. Approval of the WAN bid rubric, the Wide Area Network bid rubric.
Okay. So it is a, uh, an amendment to the agenda in the, in the action agenda. The, uh, Wayne rubric will be added to it. Any other amendments to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And a second?
My second.
Okay, so I have a motion by, um, Ms. Messick the second, by Ms. Knight. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Johnson, do we have any, uh, anyone signed up tonight for public comments? Okay, no public comments. That brings us to our consent agenda. Uh, on our consent agenda tonight, we have approval of our regular session minutes for December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and approval of COVID masking policy. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve, um, both of these items on the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
My second.
I have a motion by Ms. Knight and a second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Uh, discussion agenda, uh, discussion item A, discussion of Stokes County YMCA I-CARES grant contract.
And board members, I will go ahead and kind of roll these two together for Insight and the YMCA. Last year, we were fortunate to receive a grant for $200,000, and as we wrote that in, we wrote that to have after-school programs for our middle schools. To offer tutoring, to offer the CATCH curriculum with the YMCA. And then also to offer some social emotional support through Insight. We had those contracts approved last year, and they went through. And we have additional funding remaining from that that we can use this year. So I've reached out to Insight and the Y. We've had Mr. Johnson to review these contracts. And we would like to move forward with this and go ahead and get our after-school program started. If possible, as early as February seventh, um, to get that going. So again, uh, we've, we've been these contracts for Mr. Johnson to review. And I've spoken with our partners within these. I'd like to request, um, that if you approve of moving forward with this, I'd like to ask that we move this to action tonight as well.
You have any questions for Mr. Rose?
This is the same contract that we used last year and everything.
We did change up the amounts based on the time that we have to serve and some of the items that we have remaining from last year that reduced the cost. But it's under the same parameters.
And still sixth through eighth grade, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Rose, I have a question. Uh, in there, on the first page or under the, uh, description, I guess, the program is definitely based on the CDC whole school, whole community, whole child model. Right, that's what the program is based on, is that model? Uh, on the, uh, in which health, education, school, environment, family, community, environment, so on, uh, I guess will be discussed. Health education, is there anything in that that, uh, would concern us? As far as anything that you're teaching or?
No, sir.
Is that, uh?
No, helpful, living, um, wellness, wise decisions, things of that nature. You know, it's, it's a, it's a solid curriculum with CATCH. It's nothing to be worrisome to our board.
And, and there was nothing controversial that any parents or anyone brought to our attention last year that cau-caused any concern?
No, sir.
It's the same, basically the same program as of last year. So if there had have been concerns last year, at least we would be, we would be hearing about it now. And, um, or we'd have some heads up on it. I've, I've read up a little bit, uh, you know, about that program online. Didn't really see anything that caught too much of my attention, but, um,
Right.
I just wanted to see if, you know, if there was. Have we had any complaints or anything like that?
I had no complaints with anything that went on with the program last year. Um.
I guess one thing, I guess, uh, one question that comes to my mind is, in the times that we're in now with the vaccinations, uh, it's not a program that's going to be pushing vaccinations to, onto the children.
No, I can review that. I'll review that with our partners as well.
Yeah, that would be, if, if anything like that were to come up, it would be through the parents. Is that right? If, if, if they, if they were advocating for the vaccine, it would be, uh, discussed with the parents. That wouldn't just be the, all of a sudden they show up at the school, at the Y one day with a?
No.
Right?
No, sir, that's a parental decision. We would not allow that.
I have a question as well, but mine is on, uh, item B. Um, I would, I don't know if this could be amended, uh, to say on the, number one, the life skills training program provides social emotional learning include pre and post tests. Um, I just would love if the pre and post test, you know, would be made available to the parents as well.
Okay.
Ms. Knight, which was that, was that on the?
Item B, A, number one, under A.
Would that be on the inside or?
Yes, uh-huh, contract B or item B.
Page one of the contract with Insight, under A, number one.
Yeah.
Including pre, post tests to measure. So just make sure we make those available to, to parents as well.
Yes, as far as just transparency and them understanding what tools are being used to gauge, um, something like that.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussions? So this was on discussion item A and discussion item B, the, uh, Insight Human Services, uh, I-CARES grant. So is there any questions on either one of those two, A or B?
And I will share with you, board members, I've been taking applications for a while. I'm having a very challenging time getting this staffed. Um, we have a strong tutoring pro-program going on at Chestnut Grove that continues. I'm trying to recruit there, um, but that, it has been a, a challenge. Um, so as far as the number of teachers that we receive for this, I'd hope to get a minimum of three at each site. That may not be the case. But I'm, I'm doing the best I can for staff.
What we have listed is the two other locations have been staffed, okay, but not that one.
Correct.
This is after school.
Yes, ma'am.
It's all after school.
It's after school.
Who is your program director?
Ms. Wall with Insight. And then we have lead staff.
Sorry.
We have lead staff members at each site, too, that help to collect the data. We have lead staff members from, from our folks who kind of collect the data for us.
Any feedback on maybe what some of the hesitancy may be, just time?
It is, um, time. Last year, we ran it five days a week. We're going to cut that back to four, uh, this time. That was on, based on the feedback from, from staff members. But I think with the tutoring, they've been able to keep a limited amount of time and a little bit more flexibility. When we start the program, it's two and a half hours a day. Uh, and I think they light the flexibility up doing hour, hour and a half of tutoring. So that, that's been sort of a challenge.
Which, um, areas were you having problems getting staff?
Um, just the one school. They have a strong tutoring program going on. And I have two schools fully staffed, and then with the other, I've not received applications. I've tried.
Between their tutoring program and many coaches who are involved in spring sports, there's just not that many staff members.
Right.
Interested at Chestnut Grove right now.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Rose? Okay, so, uh, board, if we, uh, if, if we'd like, we need to move this over to, uh, action. So I need a motion to move it to action. The, uh, uh, the Stokes County YMCA I-CARES grant contract. And also the, uh, Insight Human Services Incorporated I-CARES grant contract.
Um, I make a motion to move the YMCA I-CARES grant contract as well as the Insight Human Services, um, I-CARES grant contract, uh, action with the, um, recommended edit to item A1, um, on contract B, as mentioned in discussion.
Good. Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and so, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Uh.
So that'll be on action agenda D would be Stokes County YMCA I-CARES grant contract. And action agenda item E would be Insight Human Services I-CARES grant contract. Okay? Okay, uh, discussion of new teacher bonus, Dr. Rice?
Ms. Moore's heading to the podium.
I'm sorry, Ms. Moore?
All right.
We've talked about the bonuses last meeting and kind of reviewed over them, but it's come down that we have two here. We need some board decision on. The first one is number C, uh, in your packet, and it's the low wealth teacher signing bonus. And this is a signing bonus separate and apart now from the regular monthly salary, uh, for teachers. And it requires a match, and that's why we need a decision from the board. If we decide to do this, the state will pay up to $1,000, and they require a match of 1,000. We can decide not to do any of it. We can decide not to do as much as 1,000. Uh, this, you're eligible if you were hired after July one of 2021 and still employed with the school system as of October one. We have the choice of paying it if the board decides to do so in January or February. And after talking with Dr. Rice, we're looking at February if we go this route. And talking to HR, we had approximately 33 teachers that this would, uh, impact. And it would, the match, the only funding that we could use would be current expense. The state will not allow us to use any of the federal ESRA money to do the match. It's our understanding and, uh, that once a person receives this, they would not be eligible again till July one of two, 2024 at the earliest. So we just need to make a decision on if we're interested and how much, and if the board is willing to pay the match from our local current expense fund.
And, um, Dr. Rice, do you want to elaborate on this at all?
Well, uh, again, this is a, a state, it went through on the budget, so it is a state initiative. Um, obviously, we would rather things be equitable or equal for all of our staff and all of our teachers. But this came with very specific posi-provisions that it is only for new teachers to the district. And, and I say that new teachers because it does not include bus drivers, superintendents, directors, anyone else. It is only teachers. It's a recruiting tool. Um, so I worry that if our board does not do this, if other boards do take this up and say a Surrey or Yadkin County agrees to do this, and there's a teacher that's trying to choose between East Surrey and West Stokes, uh, and one's offering $2,000 and the other one is not, um, that becomes an easier decision for somebody. Uh, obviously, if somebody's relocating, coming home and all that, uh, it may not matter. But when somebody is not sold on something, it becomes a way to recruit. So I think it would be an incentive and help us in the hiring process. I know that that season is getting close to being on us now, and we do have word that we expect this to be a recurring expense. So if the board votes to do this, I mean, they could, the board could vote to stop this at any point. But we expect this to be a continuing thing moving forward. Um, again, which would hit our budget every year, but I think it would be money well spent in the recruiting process. Um, we would like to add to that a letter contract, if you will, that a staff member will stay with us for two to three years, uh, if they were paid this. You know, at the end of one year, when their first sign, they come in with a one-year contract. If their evaluations were not up to where they should be and we released them, they would keep all of it, but if they were in good standing and we wanted to keep them, uh, and they left, we would like for them to pay some of it back. Um, we think that would be a fair agreement to say that we would like for them to commit to us as we commit this money to them. Uh, so our recommendation is that the board would, would approve this, uh, for the $1,000 in the matching grant for a total of $2,000 as we move forward. But we certainly understand the board may have some concerns and, and would certainly like to listen to those and, and listen for the board's approval.
So you're saying the, uh, that you would have a contract that would be, uh, part of the, uh, part of the bonus, that they would sign the contract?
Yes, sir, that's what we would like to do as a, as a commitment to, that, you know, if, if, you know, if the board would say a two-year deal, a contract at the end of one year, if they wanted to leave, they would give 1,000 of it back. And so, you know, so they would keep 1,000 and keep, put 1,000 back. If we looked at a two, a full three-year contract, you know, it'd be around sixty, six, $650, six, somewhere in there. I didn't do the math in front of me, but a prorated amount.
Okay. We don't have that contract, uh, drawn yet.
We, we don't because we're, again, we're, we've wanted this approved first, and then we would work with Fred to, to make that legal and get that contract ready before we started issuing this money.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, you see anything, uh, wrong with?
I've got a similar comparison today.
Okay.
It's our standard, it's, if the teacher voluntarily chooses to leave.
Correct.
If it's because of illness or some other reason, they can't continue their.
I know.
They want to leave to take another job.
Right, right, there'd be hardship cases.
And there's always been a avenue of people, you know, to follow education.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Messick?
Well, I was going to say, I agree with that. If it's an illness, a pregnancy, you know, you know, anything that they couldn't help.
Right.
And had to leave, I don't feel like we should ask them to repay it. Just good faith in there.
In some cases, these bonuses have included instructional personnel, which would be like your media and your guidance. But this one is only like Dr. Rice's stress, teachers only.
Teachers.
The instructional personnel would not be included.
So it could put us at a, uh, competitive disadvantage if we didn't offer it and all the other counties around us were offering this, then we could be at a disadvantage for it. Ms. Knight?
Um, do we know the norm of, of surrounding counties or some? I mean, you can do even more, if I'm understanding you correctly, that you couldn't put more money into?
Yes, there are districts that have been doing some signing bonuses for years. Uh, some have been doing it for certain areas, like EC teachers or high school math. There are some districts that have always, that, not always, but in recent memory have said, we'll give an extra $1,000 if you're a math teacher that's willing to come to our district or an EC teacher. So districts have been doing that, and, and they certainly have the right to add to that now, i-if they would. But the state will match up to 2,000.
Okay, I just want to be sure, you know, that we're also competitive, uh, to our neighbors, especially, um, areas that we tend to lose to, um, you know, to consider that as well.
Well, the state would actually match up to 1,000.
Wait, right, they would match 1,000 for a total of two, yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Uh, from what I'm seeing here, if we do this in two years, basically, they can leave and go to another school district and get another bonus.
Uh, it would be, uh, at the end of the three years, they could not get, be eligible for another one until July first of 2024.
Right, but we're in 2022 now.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the school year.
Three, three-fourths of the way.
We're two and a half years in. So they're only got to wait six months after they honor that contract and then go anywhere and get another job. And do it again.
Well, again, they would, they would need to sign something with us that says until July first, 2024, they will stay with us.
Yeah.
And then after that, they would be eligible to go somewhere else for the bonus.
What I'm getting at, I'm just wondering if it's going to start a condition of jumping schools every two or three years?
I wouldn't think so at that amount of money if it were, you know, substantially larger, maybe.
I, I would hope not, but, but again, people could hop for salaries or bonuses or different things right now as it is.
Yeah.
Like one thing that makes the timeframe look a little shorter is this is kind of re-retroactive back into July first, 2021.
Correct, yeah.
So if we'd, if it would have been during the timeframe that it's intended, uh, than that, than that three years. It's sort of looking like two years, it would be for the more of the three years. So going forward, I think it will be the three years.
And the reason for you knowing this like now and last month is because we're just getting the information from DPI. It's not like that we actually knew what we could do earlier, so I just wanted to make you aware of that.
Well, I'm glad that they are considering and doing this now and offering, um, you know, some help for districts because it's, um, you know, such a competitive market and everywhere is in great need of teachers. So I think it's, you know, a good option to have.
And the state budget wasn't passed until November, I believe, so.
Right.
Right.
Okay, any other, uh, questions?
On our, uh, funds. Is it going, are we okay there as far as what we've got?
As far as we know right now, we would probably pull this from our fund balance. So I think you're okay to go with that for this year.
Okay.
And if you're okay, this one, we would like maybe both of them to go to action. But if you feel like you need further discussion, this one will not be paid to February. But that's up to the board on this particular one. But the next one, we will definitely probably, we need to move it to action. But that's up to the board on this particular one.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and go to the next one. It's your attachment number D.
Ms. Moore?
Yes, sir.
Let us clean this up first on, uh, discussion item, uh, C, the new teacher bonus. Uh, do I have a motion to move that to, uh, action?
I make a motion to move it to action.
Okay, do I have a second?
My second, uh.
Okay.
And Mr. Robertson, just for clarity, is that for the full thousand or is that?
Ms. Messick?
Uh, yes, for the full thousand.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and I second her motion.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion, uh, to move the new teacher bonus, uh, in the amount of $1,000. Uh, that would also, uh, uh, have a $1,000 match from the state for a total of $2,000. Uh, along with the, uh, they would have a contract signed by the, uh, teacher upon receiving the bonus that, uh, that they would stay with the, uh, school system for three years. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Uh.
So that will be action item F, new teacher bonus, and we'll put, uh, $1,000 bonus with contract.
Thank you for that.
Okay. All right, now, uh, discussion item D, uh, the federal ESRA III teacher bonus allotment.
Yes, and last month you had in your packet the actual, um, survey that was sent out for the teachers and instructional support personnel. This one includes both now, for them to actually fill out the different kind of training, where we would have that on file since this is federal dollars. Uh, they are only paying, uh, the people that are paid from state funds. Uh, and we do have to pay this one in January, and we do not have enough money. Our allotment is 357, 564. We have been told by the state if there's some other LEAs later on that might not use all of their funding, we might get an additional allotment, but I cannot guarantee that at this time. Saying that, since we are exceeding, uh, the allotment, would be over right at $107,000. Our recommendation would be that we look at the ESRA, uh, funding, our PRC 181, which this board has already decided how we would spend that money. And as you know, that comes to technology, it comes to the, uh, technology assistance. We talked about the air purification. That's the pot of money that we would looking at as possibly making a recommendation to match or to come up with, not to match, but what we're exceeding. Um, we do have some undesignedated, and basically the reason that is is because we did not hire many, as many technology assistants as we approved in the beginning of that plan. So that is our recommendation at this time for this particular funding. Dr. Rice, you want to add anything?
I think you covered that very well. This, uh, is a deed, and we have funding available.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It would require us to do an amendment to the federal PRC 181 grant, but that's okay. We can do that.
Okay.
Um, how much money or funds is freed up with that, um, you know, those positions not being filled or not paid?
We've got right at 700 and some thousand dollars that's not designated at this time in the PRC 181. But I know we have pending things that you all approve, for example, that we've not made decision on, especially with, uh, the things through maintenance. So that would still leave you some unburjeted money by doing this at this time.
Okay. Ms. Messick, any questions?
Um, no, no questions. I feel like that, um, when the state, um, is, um, trying to give extra money for the COVID training bonus, I feel like that we need to support that. And we need to support our, our teachers and personnel that could receive this money. So I, I'm for this.
Okay. Mr. Bryant, any questions?
Yeah, do we have any staff like maintenance, et cetera, that, uh, has training on, uh, COVID and stuff? Or that's not getting anything?
This is specifies teachers and instructional. It does not include any classified positions or administrators. That's just the guidelines from DPI.
Right, thi-this is, again, something else that went through the state budget that they selected who would get this, and I don't receive it, Mr. Goins doesn't receive it, and cafeteria staff doesn't receive it. But again, cafeteria staff, they did designate them to get another pot of money. The, uh, maintenance staff got the 15 or 13 dollars an hour right now, or that rate. So they pick and choose different times with different pots. And while that, that's very difficult for a district to understand why, when you hear one thing in the paper that doesn't include you, you may get something else in the paper that does include you. And so while I, we personally don't like that because we have, the boards of education have been very good to treat all of our employees the same through the years, this state budget did not allow for that.
Okay. Any other discussion? So I need a motion to move it to, uh, action?
Does this, this does definitely include teacher assistants, correct or no?
No, ma'am.
The only, um, instructional support personnel?
That, that would be certified like your media and your guidance.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I wish it could include many others, like we said.
The state.
I wish it would include everyone.
Picks and chooses all the time. They've done that for as long as I've been in education. And no one understands why, but, but they do.
This, this year, we've had the most bonuses in, in any year that I've ever known. And we're in the process of trying to get all those paid up, most of those in January. But, uh, and then also, we're doing, just for your information, we are doing the rec. we are doing the retro adjustment back to July this month because the state did not allow us to increase the salaries till January. So they'll be seeing that adjustment in January as well, and that will be for all of our employees, so that will help them.
And you know, one thing that the state has done, and they did it years ago, is, um, the personnel is all paid on the last day of the month. And that is a pretty, um, tough thing to be paid the last day of the month, every month, and you only get paid once a month. And, um, say when you get out for Christmas and you get paid, that's a long time.
Six weeks.
It's six weeks.
We all know it.
Now, I wanna, I wanna make that clear to you know people, it's six weeks, and you don't have any other profession that I personally know of that waits six weeks going through Christmas and all of that to get their paycheck. And see, even they said, well, thank goodness, they said no later than January thirty one. So it, it would have been better to me if they could have been paid this bonus in the month, you know, in the middle of the month or whatever. But see, the state has done that to, uh, all the teachers and assistants and all the people that work in the schools. And I really feel like that that is a disservice to all the people that work in the school systems, I really do. That you're paid once a month and then you're paid the last day of the month. And so I just want to say that, I just wish that could be better.
We discussed, Dr. Rice and I discussed trying to pay the bonuses early, but with the dropping of funds and being available to request them from the state, it was not possible, it would have been like two days difference, and it's just, it was not enough time.
Not that much, but.
We were hoping to pay these in the middle of the month.
Yeah, but it was just.
I, I would, yeah, but it's, it's every year, it's all the time.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I think as.
And the only way around that, we'd be wait till after Christmas to pay our regular payroll like we normally do, but we try to do a benefit to the employees to pay it before the holidays, but, and it does make it for a long time.
Okay, all right, board, do I have a motion to, uh, move the federal ESER three teacher bonus allotment to action?
I'll make a motion to move the federal ESER three teacher bonus allotment, um, as recommended to action.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Knight, second by Ms. Messick, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, uh.
You all?
All opposed? So we'll move that, that'll be action item.
G.
G, federal ESER three teacher bonus allotment. Okay, discussion item E, water cooler upgrades.
Uh, yes, board members, in your packet, uh, you should have the estimated cost for the bottle field station upgrades. Uh, when you look at that, I went around to all the schools, the first column, that's the total number of water coolers that each school has. Uh, the second number, if we, if we move forward with the, the two recommendations, that's how many will be with bubblers. Bubblers is what's currently on the water cooler, the drinking spout. What I did is look at our middle schools and high schools adding two touchless in those areas, one around the gym, one around the cafeteria, and only putting one in our elementary schools. And then the spouts, we just kind of looked at that as kind of where they were needed throughout the school. I put an estimated cost of eighteen hundred dollars for the touchless, uh, some of our water coolers are old and we can't get the tops. Depending on the model of water cooler, some of them were just over eighteen hundred dollars, some of them were just under eighteen hundred dollars. So I used the, the cost of eighteen as an average. And then the, uh, the spouts was the same way, so we should, we should be good on that for those estimating around two fifty. And when you look at that, there's a couple here, Germanton, they have one push button field station, it's not touchless. Pinnacle has one touchless in the pod, and I didn't put anything for the early college, they currently use bottled water there. Uh, so they don't even use the water coolers, they actually took two of their water coolers out and put bottled water stations in, so they have a bottle field station. So I didn't put anything for the early college. Um, with that, the estimated cost to do these is going to be around fifty five thousand, two hundred dollars. Any questions?
Who pays for that bottled water station?
The county.
Okay.
Cause that's a county building.
Yes, so they draw the maintenance there and everything, did they draw the maintenance there? They take care of everything?
They take care of the air conditions, anything at those pods. The only thing, we have a couple pieces of equipment in the, uh, what they call the cafeteria, like a milk box and stuff like that, that we maintain as far as the facilities and everything else, the county maintains that.
What is a bottled water station?
Remember the photos I shared right before December?
What we have downstairs.
Oh.
Correct, bottled water.
Oh, you're talking about the bottle, what they put at the early college, I'm sorry, ma'am, uh, it's the wa- just the water coolers, it's put the bottled water on top? That's what they put at the early college, is that what you're talking about?
It's like a five gallon.
Yeah, put a five gallon bottle.
Somebody comes in and replaces that.
I think their maintenance, they just keep bottled there, bottles of water there, and as it runs out, they just put them, just replace them.
But no schools have that, just that.
Some schools have them, uh, as a school expense, some schools have chose to put the bottled water, the big bottled water stations and like, uh, that's sort of their teachers' lounges and things like that, but we don't pay for that as a, as a school, I mean, as a county expense. The schools pay for it as a school expense.
Okay, so these are the picture.
Everything else is the photos we showed last for the fifty five thousand, two hundred.
Okay, thank you.
So on your, uh, on the list that we have here, the touchless, I noticed like at West Stokes, I know that's a, a large school, two floors, uh, and there's only two touchless systems there. Uh, is that going to be enough to cover the school?
Well, what we did with the touchless at our middle and high schools is try to put one near the, the gym and one near the, uh, cafeteria. So at West, what I envisioned there was putting one upstairs in the lobby, uh, between the gym and cafeteria, and one downstairs outside of the, um, gymnasium. Around the, we'd have the, the main gym and auxiliary gym somewhere in that area.
But there's still five other spouts going in around the building where they can fill up water bottles as well?
Yeah, you'd still have the five spouts going around, around the school.
So you feel like this covers it pretty well?
I, I feel like, and I talked to most of the principals, there was a few, uh, when I finished this up was, uh, delays that day and, uh, are out, and I just, and I didn't get to talk to everyone. But I feel like this is covered, I kind of feel like it's consistent around how we covered the school.
Well, you know, King Elementary is such a large campus. I mean, you know, what about, they only have one, where's that going to be located?
Well, they'll just have one touchless, it would be, uh, near the, uh, outside of the, the hallway there at the cafeteria.
So if anybody was going by, they could use that.
Now, we didn't put any spouts or anything in our gymnasiums, some of our, uh, elementary gymnasiums have water coolers, but we felt like if we put the spouts, a lot of people use those after hours and weekends, we just felt like that'd be something for kids to break, to pull off.
Good.
Such a large facility there.
No, one thing we didn't talk about is the board decides to move forward, this is funding. You know, there's options, we could look at the ESER funding, we could look at capital, I didn't talk with Ms. Moore to see if we had any leftover funds and capital. I know we still have several projects we hadn't completed this year.
Wouldn't this come under ESER fund?
I think so, we checked, but I. Mm-hmm.
Well, that's why we're doing it, because of COVID.
Cause we can relate it to COVID as, as far as the, you know.
Well, I would say try to use the ESER if we could.
I'm sure we can find it in our ESER funds.
Yeah.
Somewhere between windows, ionization, some of the other stuff that we're probably going to have some money left over with.
And do we feel that three total is sufficient at Pine Grove? Maybe you can answer that, if you think three's enough? Okay.
Pine Grove only has six water coolers in the school, two in each hallway.
Yeah.
So it was going to put one touchless near the cafeteria and then the bottle at the other two, that shocked me.
Okay. I know, I'm thinking three total.
Oh, I didn't see those. I didn't go back in there.
Okay, all right, any other questions for Mr. Goins? So, do we need to move this to action?
Yes, if you don't mind.
And do we need to specify where to fund it from as far as?
If you would like for us to rewrite the ESER application with leftover funding, we can do that. If there's any barriers with that, we can bring that back to the board and ask for additional funding, but as long as it passes, we would, we can proceed.
Is the, right, I mean, is the board as a whole more interested in ESER versus, um,
Yes.
capital because of ongoing projects?
I think so.
Okay, so I need a motion to move, uh, uh, discussion item E, uh, water cooler upgrades using, uh, paid for with the ESER funds. I need a motion to move that to action?
I'll make a motion to, uh, do the water coolers and pay for it with ESER funds.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion from, uh, Mr. Bryant, a second by Ms. Goins, I mean, uh, Ms. Messick.
Already forgotten.
Sorry about that.
Two people now. I wear my name tag.
I can even see your name tag on the front, any, uh, discussion? Thank you, Ms. Messick, any, uh, any other discussion on that?
No, I'm just glad we're able to do it, and I feel, you know, I hate it wasn't done two years ago, but I, I'm very happy, I know.
And thank you for bringing that to our attention, I appreciate that, um, Ms. Knight, because we, we appreciate it that you brought it to our attention.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh.
So that will be action item H, water cooler upgrades. Using paid for with ESER funds. Okay, uh, discussion item F will be, uh, the calendar update, twenty, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, early college calendar and twelve month calendar. Uh, I was thinking, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, in your packet, you do have both proposals, uh, from the early college for next school year and the central office twelve month calendar. Uh, Mr. Durham and his staff typically work on this calendar once the precise set calendar has been released. Um, and they have done that again this year, we have reviewed that calendar, it does meet all the requirements from the state of North Carolina. Obviously, they do get a little more flexibility when it comes to starting and end dates. They're able to mirror that of the college much more, uh, effectively within our traditional high schools. Um, so their first day is August the fifteenth, and their last day is May the seventeenth, with both semesters, uh, are balanced at eighty eight days apiece. Um, twelve month calendar simply lists the twelve holidays that are also aligned with our traditional schools and early college calendar. Um, so I'd be happy to take any questions on those at this time. We also respectfully like to ask, so we move those both to action if possible.
Okay, board, any, uh, any discussion, any questions for Mr. Jones?
No. Where, where is the rest of the?
So that, that is, that, that calendar there is just a twelve month calendar for central office staff that we get.
As far as mark holidays?
Cause the other days are annual, annual leave days that are listed on the traditional.
So we'll get another calendar later?
That was at the last meeting, was the, the traditional schools calendar.
And that one was approved last time?
And I'll share that again with you.
Okay, so you'll put that in several times during the year, won't you?
Yes.
And once, if, if these are approved, I'll reshare all of them out to you all again tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for Mr. Jones?
And the, this was definitely, you said the recommendation by the committee?
Well, yes, by the committee at the early college.
Hmm.
Okay, so I need a motion to move this to action.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead, Sheriff.
I'll make a motion to move, um, this to action, the, uh, twenty two, twenty three early college calendar and twelve month calendar. Um, I think it'd be action item I.
Yes, it'd be action item I, so you moved, moving to, got a motion to move to action, need a second?
My second.
Okay, got a motion by Ms. Knight, a second by Mr. Bryant, any discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, so that brings us to a discussion, item G, uh, policy sixty one forty.
Good evening, board, uh, we discussed policy sixty one forty and the proposed changes at our December thirteenth board meeting. Uh, just to summarize those recommendations, it was that the School Health Advisory Council, um, they suggested replacing the parentheticals in the existing policy with the references to the administrative procedures regarding student wellness. Um, and at this time, I would ask, uh, that the revisions be moved or the revised policy be removed, be moved to the action agenda, uh, if there are no questions, or I'll be glad to address any questions you might have.
Do we have to sit on these thirty days?
No, not if it's an amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
And there's still more action to be done going forward, is that correct?
So the administrative procedures, the, the, um, School Health Advisory Council is look, will look at those and update those procedures based on our conversations last time and the ga- and the data that we're gathering.
So this is just an amendment to policy sixty one forty?
That is correct.
Correct? Hey, board, any questions for Ms. Cheek? Okay, do I have a motion to move this to action?
I'll make a motion to move it to action.
I have a motion by Mr. Bryant, do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Knight, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
So that will be action item J, amendment to policy sixty one forty.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to discussion item H, H A, uh, policy eighty two ten, administrative procedure for proper accounting of the NAXI Cox Reynolds Memorial School Endowment Fund.
Mr. Chairman, minutes of board, you have it at your, uh, seats tonight, the proposed revision of administrative procedures eighty two ten. The current administrative procedures were revised September twelfth, two thousand five. In two thousand eight, the Superior Court of Forsyth County revised the trust. So, uh, and it was a little bit difficult for me at the last meeting to remember the content of that thirteen years ago, but, uh, I got a copy of the judgment, and what you have before you is based on the changes that the judgment will require. We have been operating under the terms of the judgment since two thousand eight. So, uh, it's my recommendation that we approve the proposed amendment to eighty two ten in order to conform with the terms of the court judgment. We also reviewed policy eighty three twenty depositories, you have a revision of that. There's no change in substance there, there were just some typographical errors in the policy as printed, and those have been corrected. We also reviewed eighty three fifty capital assets inventory to determine if there need, if there needs to be any changes to that administrative regulation, and there do not need to be any changes, so therefore that one can stand, uh, as currently written.
So there's no changes to policy eighty three fifty? Is that right?
Correct, no changes to that one.
So only changes to eighty, uh, eighty two ten, eighty three twenty?
Right, again, eighty three twenty is only to correct the typographical error.
And then what changed in eighty-two ten, I'm sorry?
Well, eighty-two ten, n- number one, the uh, the judgment changed the name of the advisory board. It is, it is, it is now called the Trust Advisory Committee instead of Endowment Board. And the judgment set up the formation of the trusted uh advisory committee, set forth the number of members, how those members are selected. And the rest of that is, is the same uh as far as the purchase order exceeding five hundred dollars. The provision for that is the same as it has been uh in the past.
And I think we discussed it in our last meeting, uh the, the funds in this endowment fund, are they, are they only used for upkeep of the grounds or can they be used for capital improvements to the, to the buildings?
No, they, they have been substantially increased in, in purpose. The judgment says that if the amount in the trust exceeds the amount necessary to provide for the upkeep of the grounds, the excess amount may be used by the school to provide for other needs of the school, it is very broad. And the trust advisory committee also in the judgment is to make a recommendation to this board of what other purposes they want to use that money and the, this board must approve that.
Is that something that we need to do going forward, do we need to meet with this committee?
I think we do, they uh, it, it would be good to meet with this committee to discuss, you know, what are the needs at this school over and above upkeep of the grounds? Can, you know, possibility exists of, of course, utilizing those funds and as I said, when this thing first started, it was because they had more money than they could spend. So I'm not sure what the status is now, how much is being spent, how much is being spent on the grounds and then what is the surplus based on the amount that they receive each year from the trust?
So, so uh, so do you know, do you have an idea who's on the committee?
Yes, we have a list of the committee.
Yes, sir, and if you would like, I can check with them to see if they would like to invite board members or, or board chair or, or whoever and let you know when that next meeting is, uh it's, I believe it's the first week in February, but I don't have that date in front of me, but I can certainly uh let you know what that date is, daytime, location of the meeting.
Okay, maybe send us a list of who's on the committee?
Yes, sir.
So we'll know that and do we have a, do we have any idea of the balance of this uh fund?
Yeah, I'm sure.
It's like a million, one point two million actually, well, it's not good. And you check about two thousand dollars, basically they, they were checking, it's always a method, I've been able to put a hit poorly from the bank to operate, so that's where we're staying with it. Normally, they would not go back in and pull from the, the one point two million. They were still building it like here before and right now the balance is checking period, two thousand dollars.
Some ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do they use some of that one hundred and two thousand dollars each year to run the school, um, you know, pay the bills and um?
I think we've seen to be um contracted mowers, uh, a number of.
They put in a storage building for their mowers and stuff like that, that, that was an.
That they're all out, outside?
Most of it is, very often you might see some small ones that they might purchase like a vacuum cleaner for example. Um that would be inside, but most of the expenditures, I would say, are outside.
Well, isn't an awning outside?
It is. What has been said before and.
Over and over, go ahead.
I- is that they believe that if we are doing things for other schools, we should also do them for their schools. So now we have certainly not put awnings in every school, but occasionally we do. And so they believe that if we're doing that with other schools, we will eventually get to them and do that for their school. Um that has been the rationale in the past.
Well, they're just wanting all of the existing office of the office. They have an old one, students can get out and get in the building.
Where it goes straight into the cafeteria. Where now with the automatic door locks and the buzzer system, it is at the main office and there's not an awning from the main awning to that specific door.
But technically, you could use these funds because it is something that can be used outdoors in maintaining.
Yes, we don't see a problem with that.
If the committee approved.
Yes.
How many is on that committee, five? And the principal?
Uh, there's more than that, there's seven.
Seven?
Well, seven.
How's that committee made up?
You've got the principal, the, the faculty members select a representative. Then you have a certain number of parents and then I think they're like either two or three parents and two other members of the community who are not parents.
How often do they elect?
That committee is appointed by us, right?
No, it's appointed, it's appointed by the committee members themselves. They have to hold at least one annual meeting in October and at that meeting, they are to elect new members.
Do we have to approve the committee?
No, that was in the old wording, but not now.
Okay, I thought we spoke about that at the last meeting.
Well, several years ago, they were to come and report every so often and somehow that dwindled away. The reporting of how they spend the money.
They have to submit their minutes uh to the finance office.
So do you get those minutes, Ms. Moore?
Yes, ma'am.
Could the board ask that we get a copy of those minutes when you get them?
Yeah, they, they would be public records.
What public record?
Certainly, yes, the board members can get them.
Do they itemize what they spend it for? But did they itemize what they spend the money for?
It does show like the purchase order will be itemized and minutes are well enough of food that they will put in that purchase. So you do have an itemized list, it's at least on the purchase order and minutes would be agreed, agreed for that purchase.
Oh, so we'd have some kind of idea. I feel like that these people are very um, you know, prudent in how they spend the money. I feel like that they want the very best for Nancy Reynolds and we do too as a board. We want the very best for that school. But also, I would like for them, if they have this money, if another school had the same endowment, you say, um, they, as an advisory committee, might feel like that, um, you know, they could use the money and um, in a different way in purchase and the stuff for, uh, the grounds instead of asking us to, you know, to do that. Especially since it's in their guidelines, if it wasn't in their guidelines, I wouldn't say anything, but I'd like to kind of see how we can uh look at their guidelines a little more. But I do feel like that they want the very best for their school, that I want them to know that the board wants the very best for Nancy Reynolds also.
So maybe if we can, if the board can, can uh have more information on that, maybe on the, what's, what has been spent on the committee members, uh what are prudent information we think we might need, if they could, if you could send that to us?
Certainly will.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Um, Mr. Chair, we have on action agenda, the eight thousand series. If you would like to approve these three as part of that eight thousand series that we already have on here, that we can do that or we can leave these out and do the other eight thousand series without those, uh it would be at the pleasure of the board because the, the others were presented with proper notice, correct, Mr. Johnson?
Correct.
Okay.
So we, if we approve these with the other eight thousand series, we need an amendment for that?
We, we could do it all at once.
Just do it all?
The complete series.
Okay. Do we need to make mention of that though in the, in the action?
Just when we make that motion, uh when we do the approval of the policy, it would be for the complete eight thousand series.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay. Uh, looks like we're down to a discussion item I, discussion of COVID nineteen update.
Board, you have an updated packet in your packet tonight, a stapled copy of, that ju- I'll briefly go through it. Again, we all know that the county has seen a surge of COVID cases this month. Currently, there's a thousand and fifty-two active cases as of this afternoon, which is two point three six percent of the population. We have had increases in our staff and students as well, but currently, we are at point six eight percent of the population. Eight active cases with staff members, forty active cases with students, which is zero point seven three percent. So our active cases are at a lower percentage than the county as a whole. The county is up to twenty-two point six nine percent of the county has had COVID. Uh so almost a four, uh our teachers are at sixteen point twenty-eight percent and students at seventeen point eight six percent. So although we have had increases this year, we are still below the level of the county. Uh for school spread, uh we are at six point seven percent of our active cases are a result of school spread and of all the students in quarantine this year, two thousand two hundred and forty-six, there are only sixty-seven have ended up testing positive, which is still staying at that three percent level where we've stayed three percent or below all year. Uh the, but number of vaccinations are in that group, they are all up marginally over the last couple of weeks. Again, we have the update on page two of what the masking practice would be tomorrow. London Elementary would be our one school that has required masking. I will say that from my perspective, this has gone very well, what the board has approved. Uh, schools have not been in required masking for too awful long and their numbers dropped back below the five percent threshold. I believe yesterday or today, I'm sorry, today is Monday, Pine Hall was masking required and tomorrow they are out of that. London was masking optional today, they're in that. Uh in the next day or two, barring anything else, they will probably come out of that. So I think that practice has worked very well, I actually have been contacted by a few other districts around the state to ask how that works because they're considering going to something similar. Uh so that is, and then on page three is our last week's update, so you can see on daily values uh of what the increases were with staff or students uh and across the county as well. And I do apologize, I did not, for the increase in Sunday for the county, I did not update that number and so when I copied and pasted that over, it did not give a values, but I, I missed that. But you can see that in the county, it's been uh over a hundred new cases a day, but with staff and students, it has been substantially less than that, although it does have, it has had an impact in our schools. The, the long snow break, uh holiday weekend, all of that certainly helps to keep those numbers down for us. But that is our COVID update as we stand today.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Rice? Okay, uh no questions, we'll move on to our action agenda. Uh, action item A, approval of personnel and coaching. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve personnel and coaching.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bryant, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Knight, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Action item B, approval of policy eight thousand series, and this is a complete eight thousand series. It uh included in that would be what we discussed tonight with the uh Naxi Cox Rentals Memorial School Endowment Fund, the depositories and the capital assets inventory. Is there any uh, any questions about that? That have a motion, uh motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the eight thousand series of policies.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bryant, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Knight, all in favor?
Uh.
Action agenda item C, the uh WAN rubric. This the uh revised rubric for the uh RFP that we sent out for the internet service. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we um accept the revised WAN bid rubric.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Messick, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Ms. Knight, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, action item D, Stokes County YMCA I cares grant contract. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the contract with the Stokes County Y human services, uh YMCA human services.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Action item E, Insight Human Services I cares grant contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the I, I Insight I cares grant project um as amended.
Okay.
I'll second.
Do I have a motion by Ms. Knight, second by Mr. Bryant, all in favor?
Uh.
Agenda item F, new teacher bonus, uh one thousand dollars with the uh, uh contract, two to three year contract.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept the new teacher bonus contract uh with staying for, did we say three years?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that's a one thousand dollar bonus?
Yes, one thousand dollar bonus with match.
With match.
With a match from a state of also a thousand.
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Item G, federal ESSR three funds, teacher bonus allotment. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the ESSR funds, teacher bonus allotment for COVID training.
Okay, motion by Ms. Messick, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Knight, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Action item H, water cooler upgrades and the upgrades are to be paid with ESSR funds. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the water cooler upgrades um with the allotted ESSR funds.
Okay.
I second that.
All right, motion by Ms. Knight, second by Ms. Messick, do I have any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, the uh twenty-two, twenty-three early college and twelve month uh calendar for the staff. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the twenty-two, twenty-three early college calendar and twelve month calendar as presented.
Okay, motion by Ms. Knight, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Bryant, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Item J would be amendment to the policy sixty-one forty, the student wellness policy. It's presented, I think, by Ms. Cheek. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to uh.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the amendment of the sixty-one forty policy, as presented by Ms. Chief.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bryant, second by Ms. Knight, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Okay, I think that got us through our action agenda. Uh, information and announcements. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, just want to point out, our next meeting will be held February the seventh, six P M, that is a work session for the Board of Education. You also have in your packet fundraiser, fundraiser requests for information. Uh, there is one additional item that is not listed in your packet that I want to make you aware of. On Wednesday night of this week, South Stokes High School will host a special recognition ceremony for former Stokes County Schools Superintendent, Mr. Ronnie Mendenhall. He'll be recognized for his longtime commitment to education in our county, including his impact on middle and high school wrestling in our area, as he served as a participant, a coach, and an official for many years. Again, this ceremony will take place Wednesday during a break of one of the basketball games at South Stokes. Mr. Bottoms informed me that it will take place between six-thirty and seven-thirty P M. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, um, calendar, you got the calendars, all that's good?
Board, oh, I will let you know that we did not get it completed today, but we are working on the revised calendar to take account for last week's workdays. We will have that out later this week, uh, just so that you'll know, the workdays on February twenty-first, March twenty-first, and then in June, June second will become a early release day, uh, for the traditional calendar, and we will get that out later this week to take up for the workdays that we missed last week.
And you said you will be getting rid of some workdays going forward in February and March?
Yes, February, March, and one in June, to make up for the three days we missed last week.
Okay.
And we will publish those calendars later this week.
But not affecting spring break?
Correct, not affecting spring break this time.
Or does not affect graduation dates either?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I think, I think that's our agenda, but before we, before we close, uh, I would just, uh, ask everybody if they would remember, uh, our two, our two families in our school family that have lost loved ones. Uh, Mr. Roger Cook passed, uh, within the past week. Mr. Cook was a math teacher at, uh, South Stokes High School. I'm sure I was, uh, I was in his class, uh, more than one time, and, um, he was such a great teacher. Uh, considered him a, a great teacher, a friend, mentor. Uh, he was involved in, um, all activities, he was involved with the marching band with Mr. Dees. Uh, if you ever went to a basketball game, you probably saw him sitting behind the scorer's table. Uh, he was a, a, a good friend to all the students, uh, such a great guy. Uh, his health had been declining, but, uh, we're sure we'll miss, uh, Mr. Cook. And also, um, Ms. Southern, Ms. Emily Southern, um, at, uh, West Stokes, uh, passed within the past week, and, um, again, she was, um, an outstanding person, just a true heart of gold. Uh, if you ever went to a, a sporting event, you probably saw her on the sidelines, uh, and the kids loved her. She was a great teacher, a great help, uh, she'll, she'll truly be missed. And we just ask everyone if they would remember those families and their prayers and thoughts and, and be with them, so. Anything else, Board? Need a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn for Mr. Bryant, need a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Ms. Knight, all in favor?
Uh.
We got in there, I tell you. Yeah. That was good, that was, uh, I tell you what, our action items, uh-
I should have, yes.